I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So everybody knows we're recording via Zoom, on stream and Facebook, and it's on WCT 12 being recorded also. If you're gonna make comments or talk during the meeting or anything, please identify who you are and what your position is, if you're resident or you have a position with the town, so everybody out in Zoom knows who you are. Okay? All right. So first thing is the FY21 Community Development Block Grant Administration contract between Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and Warren. Okay?
I'll make a motion to accept and sign the FY21 Community Development Block Grant Administration contract.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and it is approved. Okay. Next thing is line item transfers. You want to do a motion to accept?
I'll need to bring his folder.
Oh, what's this? This is the line item transfer.
No, that's the accounting.
Okay.
Do you want those?
So, oh, these are all the individual, I see. So do we need to read all these off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's do it, I'll read them off the page. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the following line item transfers. Highway from Drainage to Beaver account, four hundred dollars. Town clerk from Assistant Town Clerk salary to Town Clerk salary, one thousand thirty dollars and fifty cents. For the Council on Aging from Lunch Coordinator to Custodian, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Council on Aging from Lunch Coordinator to Director, forty-five dollars. Council on Aging from Lunch Coordinator to General Helper, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Just a minute, Rich. David, all three of the COAs are in that one pile?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Cemetery from Road and Fence to Supplies, a thousand dollars. Fire Department from Town Admin to Ambulance Calls, four thousand dollars. Assessors from Assistant Assessor Clerk to Assistant Assessor Salary, three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Selectmen Supplies, five thousand. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Shepherd Building Supplies, six thousand. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Facilities Custodian Salary, four thousand. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Technology, five thousand. Board of Selectmen Town Admin Salary to Legal, twenty-four thousand. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Animal Control Salary, one thousand three hundred and fifty. Board of Selectmen from Town Admin to Liability Insurance, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's my motion, I need a second.
I don't have that one.
What?
You don't have that one?
The last one?
The last one, I don't know.
Okay, I'll find it.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before a motion is made or anything, and I appreciate Selectman Iaker for reading those out to the public, we will need an individual vote on each one of these items, so you'll need a second and a vote on each one of these particular items.
Thank you. So let's read them again.
All right. I rescind my motion. Highway, for the Highway Department from Drainage to Beaver Control, four hundred dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to transfer for the Town Clerk from Assistant Town Clerk Salary to Town Clerk Salary, one thousand thirty dollars and fifty cents.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the following transfer for the Council on Aging from Lunch Coordinator to Custodian, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to do the following transfer for the Council of Aging from Lunch Coordinator to Director, forty-five dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
The, David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to transfer the following for the Council on Aging from Lunch Coordinator to General Helper, two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to transfer for the Cemetery Department from Road and Fence to Supplies, one thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to, for, to transfer for the Fire Department from Town Admin to Ambulance Calls, four thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to transfer the following for the Assessors from Assistant Assessor Clerk to Assistant Assessor Salary, three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to transfer for the Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Selectmen Supplies, five thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to transfer from Town Admin Salary to Shepherd Building Supplies, six thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to transfer from Town Admin Salary to Facilities Custodian Salary for four thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to transfer for the Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Technology, five thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to transfer for the Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Legal, twenty-four thousand dollars.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to transfer for the Board of Selectmen from Town Admin Salary to Animal Control Salary, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second? All. Now you recuse myself.
No, okay.
All in favor?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Denny Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye. Motion passes.
Make sure you put it down or recuse myself, please.
I'll make a motion to transfer the following.
You have to sign that one.
Oh, okay. For the Board of Selectmen from Town Admin to Liability Insurance, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second?
That's in his bill pay. That's why I forgot to put it in yours, and I put it in yours.
Oh, it's in there? Okay. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Those are all of them? Is that all I need? Okay. Here it goes.
Okay, next thing is warrants and bills.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants and bills. Number ninety-three payroll for forty-five thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Number ninety-four vendor, thirty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Nope.
What? Thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents? What did I say?
Seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. I'm getting a little loopy over here. Following bills, shred it for a hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents. Northeast IT, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Parking clerk, fifty-eight dollars. A few from WB Mason, twenty-three ninety-eight, seventy ninety-eight, thirty ninety-six, and one eighty-seven oh seven. KP Law for sixteen hundred fifty-one dollars and four cents. Crystal Rock, fifteen dollars eighty-seven cents. Ware River News, thirty-one dollars for a newspaper subscription. Renaissance Alliance Insurance Services, twelve hundred forty-eight dollars. Mass Corps for a hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. Can I read this one?
Nope.
Okay, that's the end of my motion.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The bills pass unanimously, we'll be paying them. I have one additional bill, which Rich just recused himself for, and it's to Joyce Iaker, and it's in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Second? All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes. Okay. Okay. So minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve March seventh and eight minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously, and the minutes are approved for those days. Okay, new business. We have a new bill, accounting form.
Is that what this thing is?
Yep.
Okay, so now you're doing it.
So, yeah.
Okay. Tammy has asked that in the future that we do a spreadsheet more thing so that we can keep track of the bills better, and she can know what account we want then to be taken out of. She's going to implement this come July first to most of the departments. There are a few departments she's not implementing to. So I put this together with her, and we are going to try it out. What it does is it lists, if you look at it, it lists all of the bills that we are paying this week and the amount. If you notice the running balance, the top number is the number that she's given me for the week, the bottom number is what we have left in the account. Now, instead of having to sign every single one of the bills, you only have to sign the two sheets that we have.
Sign both sheets, or however many?
However many sheets we have, up at the top. Nope.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Where that line is, like with my name underneath?
That would be good.
Okay.
And that's, that's good to satisfy her needs as long as you mean that for accounting purposes?
Yes, that satisfies her needs for accounting purposes. And then what's nice about this is that if I have a question, did this bill get paid, she is going to put on her copy the date she received it and the date it was paid, so that if there's ever a question about a bill, I can always go back and see my bills and then also see hers.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool. So for this round of bills, what do we sign? This thing?
The one in your bill, if you look in your purple envelope. That was, this was just an example.
So that one's the actual one?
So this is the actual.
Oh, I got it, okay.
So those two sheets.
Okay. In the case of, both David and I are recusing ourselves on an item?
I think if we annotate "recused" next to it?
Okay.
Yep.
And just initial it, saying that we recused from it?
Okay.
So. So it just makes it better, she likes it better because then we don't have people signing with the remittance slip they was in. We don't have people not turning in, and it helps us keep track of a bill, but did we turn this bill, did we not turn this bill?
Okay, cool, good.
I'm off a streamline, I make it easier.
Yeah.
Can I see the report?
It's, well, it's in your book.
It's just the sample, and I.
This is the sample.
The real one, we will sign, I would just do it after.
It's right after agenda, that's it.
And this is a spreadsheet?
Yeah.
And it's a file?
Yes.
Who owns it?
I do.
You do?
Each department will own their own file, and then they just, they send her the printed copy.
She receives a hard copy?
She receives a hard copy.
Okay. Just thinking out of the box, to use the cloud.
Get your, get your brain turning there.
Not now, but at some point, you use the cloud, so there's only one document and everybody can see it, and then there's no more.
Yeah, but she, she's, I think she's also working on a new spreadsheet for time sheets, for time cards, and it will actually calculate your sick leave and everything down at the bottom. And so she's locked that part of it, but the rest of it she didn't lock. So I guess we could reuse the cloud, but we would want to lock our documents.
So, this is, this is great. Sometimes in the office, meaning here, we need a hard copy, so that's why the cloud doesn't apply that much.
Yeah.
But thinking about streaming line and everything, we might look at that later.
Yeah, I know she wants a hard copy as of right now.
Okay. Well, the other thing is, can we elect, at some point, can we electronically sign these things? I noticed some documents we've been getting, like with, if it was the EDA or something.
Legally, we can do it with our own.
We're starting to electronically sign documents, so.
So, there's certain things, because I think, there's certain requirements with different things out there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think certain state documents you can't digitally sign, they want, they want a wet signature.
They want the red ink, I'm sorry, the black ink?
Yeah.
Red ink.
Somebody left a blue pen on my desk.
We need to throw all those blue pens away.
No, I love my blue pens. He just took one off my desk.
No, we missed it.
All right, cool.
Mine is black, but you can write any color in it.
So we have the police and fire monthly reports. They're not here, so we probably just carry those over to, to the next meeting, so we can, in case if anybody has anything about them, questions. Okay, old business? Got any old business?
And I'll do this in old business. So, we received one point one million dollars for the municipal emergency disaster relief fund. I was in a meeting with Jeremy yesterday. There were, and I just want to like, to shout out to Jeremy, but also just for people out there to understand how well we did with this money. Twenty-eight towns were covered by this fund, and there was seven point five million dollars total in the fund. We received basically a seventh of that.
That's awesome.
It's really good.
That's really.
And I want to say that the reason we probably received that is because Jeremy did a boatload of work. He took a million pictures, he met with FEMA and MEMA multiple times, went out to the damaged areas multiple times to explain what was going on. FEMA didn't want to give us any money, and they basically kind of nitpicked everything to death. But, and maybe this is a shout out to MEMA too, the guy from MEMA said to Jeremy, you know, we'll help you out, we'll, we'll figure this out. And so, and that's where we get this money, I think from Jeremy's efforts, so. Think about what Jeremy gets paid and the fact that he just brought us.
A million dollars.
A million dollars in, in, I mean, in road repair funds. It's huge.
Somebody that's not, not to his standard, probably would have just, oh, okay, they don't want to give us money, and we would have had to suck it up. He was aggressive with it, and.
You have to do a lot of work.
Do a lot of work to get it, and now we got a million dollars to fix stuff.
He's an elected official, we can't tell him to do anything, he's done this, and he's worked on other grants, all on his own. He's just, he's done a great job, so.
I have to say, I'm super impressed with Highway Department, because they have been stepping up, and Jeremy's been stepping up with his leadership. I know his guys really respect him, they, they love him, and, you know, he's been doing a great job over there, and I, kudos with respect for him and his team. Again, million dollars to our town.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's huge, because that's stuff we would have had to have fixed out of our own budget. Streets and, you know, culverts and stuff like that, that really got damaged, and, yeah. And you did a good job too, helping out.
Thank you.
Outstanding job. It was a team effort, you guys.
And so I'll say, on Saturday, think about, you know, what the guys at the Highway Department make, and, you know, look at what they can do. And they are taking on a lot more responsibility now too, with the cemetery and parks, they're in charge of the whole town now for grounds, so.
Absolutely.
You need to take it out.
Right. Any other old business?
That's it for me.
Any old business?
No, sir.
Cool.
And, I don't? Town Administrator Report. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you members of the board, public in the, the audience on TV. Just a couple things very light on the report tonight. Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, for, for allowing these transfers to go through. So this is the first step process in this. FinCom is going to be meeting on Tuesday, the seventeenth, to review these and to go over these as well. That folder that, that you have, Mr. Chairman, has all the backing of the information from where the accounts were coming from. I, I worked with Tammy, our accountant, to make sure that those, you know, those funds were, were available to be transferred in the appropriate places. So those are all accurate, and we'll take that, that folder to FinCom on, on Tuesday night. To just talk about, a little bit about the board's discretion for allowing me to go to that training today, just a couple things that, you know, were learned. There's quite a few groups of different people from different communities from across the state that were at this training. This was a, a, a training that was affecting human resource departments within municipal governments. And as one of my functions for human resource, it was critically important to understand some of the new mandates that are coming out, and, you know, some things that we need to keep tabs on. We could be audited at any time by the federal or state government when it comes to human resources. So we have to make sure that our personnel files are up to date, they're locked in a central location. We have to make sure that, that our I9s are, are complete and that they are accurate. That's a very important document that comes up in audit. An I9 is a form in which the town has certified that we are hire, that we are hiring individuals that are eligible to work in the United States. So by us making sure that we're doing our fiduciary responsibilities with providing the documentation along with the form being completed, the verification is critically important, making sure that that's in a separate binder away from the personnel file itself, because that, that could be just audited within itself. To making sure that, that resumes. So for example, if the town is advertising for a position, and even though the applicant may not have been selected, it is the town's responsibility to keep that resume on file for a minimum of three years, even if that person's not selected in a file. So those are some things that, that, that were talked about at, at this discussion today in Rentham. And it was talked about on, on some of the issues concerning how, how other departments work and making sure that, you know, the school department is also in compliance as well, because they do their own human resource stuff there as well. But ultimately, it is kind of like the town's responsibility as well, because the liability would fall on the town for that. So there was some cross-sectioning of, of concerns that were brought up. Another issue, some new legislation that came out, post-certification for our police officers. We have to make sure that our officers are certified. They're starting with the last name A through H first. By middle of June, our officers have to be post, have the app documentation be post-certified. I checked with our, our police chief, Jerry, he's in the process of doing that, and he's already got half of it.
What's POST, P-O-S-T, right?
Yeah, POST, yep.
What does that stand for?
So that, that is for an officer to be certified, and it's a, I don't know the exact acronym of how they, how they come up with that, but it's, it's a certification for an officer to, to go through and to have, you know, when there's a complaint issued from the public, make sure that the complaint has been resolved, and that if it's not resolved or if they're not certified, they can't be a police officer anywhere in the United States. It goes into a central database system, and, you know, whether an officer is certified in Warren or whether an officer is certified in Los Angeles, California, that certification will go into a database throughout the country to know whether or not they're certified, if there's complaints against these officers, or whatever the case may be. So it's, it's, it's a relatively new piece of legislation that's been out there, and our chief is right on top of it, making sure that we're in compliance with that.
POST means Peace Officer Standards and Training.
So it's a standardized training for all police officers, because we've had such a variation of academies in training throughout the years. We have auxiliary police officers, we have part-time police officers, and we have full-time police officers, and they're trained at different standards. So now they're just making sure everybody is trained at a standard level. They, they have the Emergency Vehicle Operators Course, they have the proper firearms training, all that stuff is done prior. Where in a reserve intermittent academy, they wouldn't have had certain things like that, so it gives them everything across the board. So, it gives them everything across the board.
So, that's, that's that certification that they would need to obtain, and obviously, the chief is on top of it, because I had that conversation with him as soon as I got out of the-
So, the problem with the POST is what we're seeing is, basically, essentially, we're making all our police officers full-time, because you're training them all to a full-time standard now, and now, if they get POST certified, they're marketable as a full-time police officer, and they can go other places where, if you would just reserve intimate, that's all you'd do. But now you got a full-time academy, so it makes them much more marketable and harder to keep.
Okay.
So, this certification will be broken up into three years, so this will be the first section, A through H, and then they'll do the next section, depending on, you know, your last name, and then the third section will be done. So, you're looking at 2022, 2023, and 2024 to have, to have that go through the whole, all of the sections. So, that was the crux of the discussion today, of, you know, what were the standards of human resource, some of the things to look for in an audit, and to how to prepare. You know, for example, if there was something that was incomplete in our personnel file, we should have a log, and the log should say, you know, an error log, and it should be noted that on such and such a day, you know, we reviewed these files, there was, this was incomplete, we notified it, try to take some remedial course of action, whether it be, we try to correct to bring it up into compliance, or we just notify that it, that it has been not in compliance. So, you try your best to documentate all of that. And I'm sure, you know, the board and, you know, and its purview, you know, if they want me to, you know, move in that direction, we can do that, you know, over the summer and stuff. Having, you know, they talked about drafting job descriptions and posting descriptions, and to learn about how, how it's important to be, you know, very clear in your job postings, and to be also clear in your, in your offer letter as well. So, if you're, you know, there's some communities that, you know, because of the market is in so much of a demand now for employees, that offer letters for municipalities have been, you know, a little bit out of the ordinary. And why I mean by, I say that is, some municipalities are offering, you know, an additional week of vacation, not necessarily paid, but in order to attract new hirees, they're offering, there's, there's stuff that's, you know, typically-
Telework and stuff like that.
Typically, that is not out of the norm, that's out of the norm for municipal government, they're offering, they're making those incentives available to new hirees. So, those are some communities that are doing it. Another part of the discussion today was, you know, if there is gonna be a telework, make sure you have a telework policy in place, a very, very clear telework policy in place, a remote policy in place. So, those are things that, that are important, having a complete employee handbook with policies spelled out, clear, setting a clear direction. Those are also things that you can, that can be helpful with also trying to attract employees. So, when we have a new prospective employee for whatever department, you know, they can see the employee handbook, maybe it's available on our website, you know, that, you know, if they're going to apply for a position, they can see exactly what are the policies, how there's clear descriptions. More now so than ever, and to be a competitive market, people are looking for what are the nooks and crannies of this job. If I'm gonna take a job in another community, if I'm gonna make a risk, if I'm a middle-aged person and I've been involved in another community, I'm gonna take a jump into a new community, I wanna see what I'm getting involved into. So, you know, those are things that, you know, to be a marketable community, that, that, you know, we should be doing, and trying to make sure we're up to date on. And, you know, those are things that don't necessarily cost anything, you know, just having that available, that are, that are important.
Very good. Well, it seems like you got a lot out of the course today, and it's very encouraging, and I agree, we need to have a better grip on personnel files, and one of the things that I've been talking about is, when we come up with these positions, and we're talking about, what's the position description? Do we have a current position description for that, just like we're talking about with the Assistant Town Clerk's position? Let's make sure we, before we post it, we have a current job description, so when we put that out there, people know.
Right.
And you need to absolutely check these boxes and make sure that everything is correct, because you gotta be very clear with people on what their roles and responsibilities are in the job position. We don't want anybody taking a job and turning around and saying, I didn't know I had to do that.
Right.
All right. So, I'm good, like, after all this-
Right.
The elect, you know, the-
Annual town meeting.
Annual town meeting and everything, once that's over and we're good and things slow down again, let's aggressively target these, the personnel files, making sure training's being done, training's being kept and recorded, and that's when we should start looking at actually doing courses for the employees, such as like EEO classes, the Equal Employment Opportunity classes-
A diversity class.
Sexual harassment classes, diversity classes, these are all things that we need to be doing, and if we can get that kind of a standardized, where around this certain time, we're gonna do these things, and all the employees are invited to them to do it, it will definitely help a lot more. So, we're getting on track, moving in the right direction. Did you have anything else?
Nope, no, sir, I kept it light, just because of the line item transfers, and, you know, we have our meeting on Saturday, so.
Did you have anything else, folks? Any questions?
No.
Derek, any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Next thing, comments and concerns? Do you have any comments or comments?
We just didn't have any, one. Some residents, they are not happy with a rooster, and we're trying to see, there's nothing much, you know, we can do. You had an idea, like, you know, inviting them in here and then-
So, yeah, so, just to speak on this, and I know that Derek, you had reached out to me, and, so, there was, there's been an issue on Carl Street with a rooster, and a couple roosters. And I received initially a concern from a gentleman that lives on Maple Street, and went over there, listened to it, I explained to him, you know, it is very difficult to, you know, to regulate these types of issues, but I did look into it for him. When I came back to Town Hall, I assessed the situation, I contacted our animal control officer, had a very good conversation with her with regards to, you know, what's the procedures to follow. She was very familiar with this, this particular area. She certified to me that the animals were being kept humanely, and there was no issues of them being kept inhumanely, and that, you know, it's tough to regulate, you know, roosters. So, I went back to the zoning ordinance and the zoning bylaws, and it's very clear to me that the zoning, zoning ordinance and the zoning bylaws does have a section where it talks about noise and vibration. However, it doesn't define the definition of noise and vibration, and it doesn't really give any teeth or any enforcement to a noise and vibration. So, I had recommended to, to the petition, to the concern, to the resident and to Derek that, you know, you may wanna look at the zoning bylaw, maybe make a, some amendment or a change or propose that. That would be on the extreme side. On the interim side, I had suggested that, you know, maybe there be a meeting, a community meeting, a neighborhood meeting, where maybe the Board of Selectmen may want to be like the intermediary and invite, you know, the affected neighborhood, the residents, the butters, and to try to mitigate the concern, and try to come up with some, some type of resolution that would satisfy all parties. You know, those were recommendations that I had given. I'm, so totally up to the board's purview, and it's up to the neighbors, if, you know, if they feel as though that, you know, any of those would be of help. But, you know, I think you guys were very, very productive in a lot of those dog hearing concerns that you've had, and trying to come up with an amicable solution for both parties. So, it's a difficult situation, and noise in general is very difficult to enforce, even at the court level. You know, it's very difficult to enforce, so, you know, there, you know, there may be some type of community engagement there that, that may help rectify the problem.
So, on that note, it was my understanding that the Board of Health was working on some bylaw amendments on that. So, they're currently trying to address it, that's what I heard last. The problem with that is, I don't think we can request somebody to come in, because we're overstepping. We have no bylaw, no statutory authority to sit there and do anything, and if, if somebody wants to own a rooster, they can own a rooster.
Right.
There's nothing saying they can't. Unfortunately, if you have a neighbor that moves next to you and has a rooster, there's not much we can do as a town, because there's nothing in there that says they can't. So...
I think the thought of having that meeting was just kinda like what we've done with the dog hearings, is just try and say, okay, we're, we can maybe help get a conversation going, so that they're not at each other's throats, or, I mean-
Right, I understand.
They would have to agree to it. They can't, they can't call the meeting and make them come, we would say, you know, this would be an offer that we would make, would you like us to come out and talk?
There's no, we have no, nothing in there, as far as like-
No, we don't, yeah, I know.
We can't do any, is we have no force enforcing authority to do anything on that, other than, here's your neighbor, here's your neighbor, and we bring them together to talk, but if that causes more problems, then we're on the line on that. You know, I think it's one of those things where it's like, you know, we don't have any bylaws on it, you know, talk to your neighbor, you know, basically ask them to quiet their rooster, and it's hard, because I have roosters at my house, and they go off, they don't just go off in the morning, they go off at two o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, all day long, roosters will sound off, and if you have more than one, they start talking to each other and get very vocal. You know, with, with that situation, it's time to thin the herd, as I would say.
And is it a general bylaw or zoning bylaw about the noise?
It would be a zoning bylaw.
It is zoning.
Which I think that's more on building and equipment and stuff.
Yes.
It's not about animals.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't want, okay, so the Board of Health is working on something-
The Board of Health is working on.
I don't wanna have the town turned into like anti-animaling either, right? I mean, if there's a farm, and you move into a farm, or move in next door to a farm that's been there for a hundred years, and then all of a sudden say, oh, this is too noisy, and I don't wanna shut it down.
And people move to the country so they can have these things.
Yeah, exactly.
You know?
You can't do that wall fam, right? But you can do it out here, you can have a couple sheep, or, you know, some chickens or whatever, so I think we wanna keep that.
Well, aren't we an agricultural community anyway, so you can't make a bylaw unless you gotta rescind the agricultural.
We're actually not, we're not, um-
I thought we voted to approve that.
Did we vote to approve?
I thought we did.
Because I didn't see anything saying that we're an agrico-
Didn't we vote to approve that?
It's agricultural in all districts.
It's agricultural in all districts?
Yeah.
It's hard.
And it's hard to fight that.
So, that's a zoning thing.
But I don't think, what is it, um, we're not a right-to-farm community yet, okay? We didn't, we didn't vote a right-to-farm, which is different. We do have agricultural, but we don't have any bylaws saying what people can and can't do, in that, that type of thing. They have the right to have it, but we don't have a right, we don't have anything saying you can't own more than five roosters. Right now, if somebody wanted to own a hundred roosters, they could own a hundred roosters, and there's nothing we can say, as long as they treat them humanely-
Right.
And they're not endangering anybody, you know? It would be really noisy to live next to them, but they could do it.
Or donkeys.
Yeah. Well, even goats, everybody's getting goats now too, and goats can be very noisy. They, some of them sound like yelling babies.
Oh, God, really?
So, yeah, so, I, I don't think we, you know, all we can do is take their complaint and say, okay, you know, prefer them to maybe Board of Health, because they're working on something as far as a bylaw with that. And I knew they had some stuff in the works years ago, but they never came forward or something, so, you know, we don't have anything saying they can't have them, you know?
Looks by right.
Yeah. You know, I know then it can be annoying, but it's what it is. So, and I think if we try to bring people in here and get more involved in a meeting setting, it would probably, it could upset neighbors, because now they might be feeling like they're targeting us, and, you know, all you do is complain, and then, we have no authority at that point, like, okay, nothing we can do. Yes, sir?
Joe Conrad, resident. Even if it was the Farm Animal Inspection Officer, if there's nothing wrong with the animals-
Right.
The issue is moved.
Right. And the ACO is also the animal inspector for the town. And she looked at the animals, and they're being taken care of, it's humane, you know, they got their food, they got their water, they got their shelter, they're being taken care of, they're not being abused. Yeah, it is what it is. I don't think there's much we can do for that.
No.
You know, until a bylaw passes, and in-
IRPLEX.
Huh?
IRPLEX.
IRPLEX, but, and I have to say, they can be annoying, because mine wake me up at very early in the morning sometimes, and, you know, I deal with them, but I'm also gonna handle that problem, so it's not annoying the rest of my neighbors either. I just happen, sometimes when you buy chickens, you think you're getting hens, and you get a rooster or two inside there, and what do you do with them? You can't just dump them off at their local humane society, because they don't want them, you know, so you're stuck with the roosters to take care of.
Dinner.
Well, I didn't wanna say that, but that's what, that's what I use them for, they're meat birds at that point, so. And there'll be several in my freezer here in the next few weeks, so.
Well, I guess my point was, only someone expressed a concern, and we just provided it, we thought, we know we can't do anything.
Yeah, there's-
You know, it's, it is what it is. I mean, in my example, where I live, houses are very close by, and there's somebody who has birds, and every time I have a visitor from Boston or something, it's like, oh my God, how can you stand all that noise? What noise? I can hear it anymore, but, you know, it's-
But if you go to Boston, you're gonna hear all the cars and the traffic and everything else, and that's noise to us, and it's soothing to them. They filter it out.
Yeah.
You know?
It's hard, but I didn't want it to have a person, you know, say, hey, hey, and we took care of it.
And I know, I know Tammy, the ACO, has been addressing that stuff, and she's been dealing with those places, you've been going there and talking with these people, but we don't have anything, and there's nothing, even the state laws are very vague. there's nothing, even the state laws are very vague on doing anything with them. Unless you have a bylaw addressing the issues, there's nothing we really can do.
She was very familiar with the location.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been for a while. It probably has been for a while.
And we get calls about chickens in the road and she gets called out there, cows, some cows are in somebody else's field and, you know, it's agricultural. Cows are gonna get loose, horses are gonna get loose. You know, they, they're big animals, they push through the fences, they, they go for a walk, you know? We live in a country, you know? Don't hit the cow. You're not gonna win, you know? So...
We even had a flying umbrella the other day in Main Street.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I, I called the chief and they took care of it, but it was just flying.
Somebody let it go through, huh?
Yeah.
Get away. So, uh, was that it, Rich?
For that, yeah. I have other things.
Um, did you have anything on that? Okay, all right. Did you have anything else for old business?
Those comments and the comments concerns.
Did you have anything else? What?
We did have other comments.
Yeah, no, I'm...
Okay.
Just moving away from the one subject.
Okay, I thought you were, I thought you were moving on.
We go through the board members, town administrator, secretary, and then I open it up to the, the residents. Do you have anything for comments concerns?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No more concerns from this area.
Okay. I thought I had something. Oh, so we had a fire...
Oh, yeah.
In the community, 100 Maple Street. The people lost their house and lost everything. I know there's stuff going out there right now for GoFundMe or not GoFundMe or the other, the other app to help get some money for them. You know, i- it's out there if people wanna do that, but these are residents of our community and they experienced a very traumatic event in their lives. I don't think we even know where the cat is yet. There was a cat in the house and we can't confirm if the cat was in the house or if it get away. I know they put stuff out there that if you do see their cat around Maple Street to, to let them know about the cat. But I don't think we confirm that it's in the house. You know, just again, you know, these things, they're very traumatic to people and please be supportive of the family. I hear they're very good people and, you know, us as a community, we typically come together on things like this and if you can, you know, show your support for them, please. So, um, that's all I have on that one. Okay. Did you have anything else, Jim?
No.
Karen?
No.
Okay. Anybody from the audience have anything for comments concerns? Yes, Beth?
Uh, Beverly Salt is resident. I understand that the selectmen made a decision outside of the meeting on who would be the chair.
Okay, we talked about it and we just decided we weren't gonna reorganize the board.
Yeah, last week.
Yes, but...
We didn't make a decision on that.
No, but you talked about it outside of the meeting.
No.
On who would be chair.
No, we didn't.
Thought we mentioned it in the meeting.
Well, normally after the election, um, someone nominates someone. I mean, you, you know.
I understand.
Yeah, and we just decided because there's no new members, that everybody's good with where they're at. Did the same thing for the planning board. Everybody was good, there was no new members, so we just, we like how it is, it's working.
But is that a violation of the open meeting law that you decided that without, you know?
No. It was in a decision right here.
Yeah. We, we're just not doing it.
All right. My second question, what's the update on the temporary police station? I mean, it's been almost a year when, you know, the catastrophe happened.
That's, that's a tough one. It's going through the building permits process. BJ, as, as she's been told, there's no special favors, there's nothing. She's to do her job and make sure she dots her i's and crosses her t's and make sure all the building permits satisfy all the requirements. And that's what they're trying to do right now is finalize their permits. They had some issues and now they're, I think they're having a meeting on Tuesday with their engineers and everybody involved, but it's not just, it's not just putting up a building, you know, or just moving into a space. They had to do certain requirements with, with the building that are above and beyond what they thought they would have to do.
So when did you expect them to be in there? I mean...
I expected them to be in there already.
Yeah.
But again, with the building permits and everything else...
Thirty days.
Yeah, the, the permits, they, they held up. We, we have nowhere for them to go and we have to make sure that the building permits are all pulled and done right and they're going through that process with the building commissioner and, you know, once she's satisfied with everything, they can continue to move forward. The building's cleaned out, they put up some interior walls.
Well, just studs.
Just the studs. There's no sheet rock, no electrical, no anything like that, but they put some metal studs up in the building and the project was stopped because they needed to make sure all their permits were in order. So that's where we're at right now.
So are you maintaining the police station downtown?
Yes. Yeah, there's still a town building.
Yeah.
Uh, the dehumidifier that was down in the basement of the town hall, was that transferred to the boxing ring?
No, that's a new one.
A new one? So that, so people do check that dehumidifier?
Yeah, it's still there. Yeah.
I think the, the one in the town hall has a hose to it, right? Doesn't have a...
It drains on it. Yeah, because it drains, it drains automatically down into a well.
So you don't have to empty the bucket and check on it. It just drains, yeah. So Jerry does go down there and...
Yeah, he checks to make sure it's all set.
Like once a day, just make sure it's running and, and it has improved the conditions down there. The humidity level.
Yeah. The water problem's always gonna be an issue.
Yeah, but, yeah.
There's nothing we can do about that. You'd have to redo the whole basement for that.
Yeah.
Since we're talking about the police station that's in the town hall...
Can you just identify?
Oh, Anne Vanville, resident, taxpayer. Do we, um, do they, trying to think how to word this. Because the police sta, because the police are there, did they fix the violations that the building inspector found on her report?
Uh, no.
Why not?
Um, the simple ones, moving out the debris, the studs, things like that, tires, those were fixed. But you gotta fix the fire escape means of egress.
No, the exit sign.
All, all that stuff.
Did they do exit signs?
No, no.
Because why?
Um, because they're moving. So right now, we're maintaining the building at its current standard, okay? Making sure nothing gets worse and once they move out of there, then in the town votes on what they wanna do with the building, then we'll address that.
Also, we should say that some debris couldn't be moved because of asbestos.
Yeah.
So some stuff couldn't be touched because it would kick up, it would kick up dust.
There's a lot of asbestos dust in there and mold and stuff like that, so there's certain things that couldn't be taken out of there.
Where is that?
Well, there's mold in the basement, on a bunch of books, old records and stuff like that.
Somebody that specializes in that and move it out.
Yep, and it costs money.
Wow.
And we need to, we need to budget for that and have somebody come in and abate that and remove all that. So that's...
Expensive.
Expensive and things that we gotta plan for. So, yes, Hannah?
Okay, so the town hall, um, the town hall repair and maintenance for the proposed budget is twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. So what do they intend to do with that money if they're really not doing much to the building?
Well, I believe that's, you know, it's a lot of things.
Thank you.
Right now, we're just in a holding pattern, because we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do with that building. We were hoping to have the police officers out of there by now. Unfortunately, you know, things don't always go to plan.
Could be a...
It costs money and it takes time to get things. We knew that they had to build the inside and put up all the rooms and the walls and everything else and clean up that, that building at the co, the rights complex, so we knew that was gonna take time. There, there's a lot more to it, cause there's engineering reports, there was a, what was the other thing there? The, um, the vibration?
Seismic.
Seismic, seismic vibration study that had to be done or something?
Well, that, that project's all under control, controlled construction, so there's, there's several steps in which they would have to be done in order to obtain a building permit.
And they're going through all that and we didn't, we didn't think that would be that much involved. We thought they'd be able to get some permits, put up the walls, move in there in a temporary location. They'd go to plan, but we are moving forward.
Which, which means we got a pretty sweet deal.
Yeah. Because they're doing a lot more work than what the, the contract.
Yeah.
And they have to do it, so...
But if they're in there for another six months, don't you think that the exit signs and the things that are fixable should be fixable?
Um...
Because, I mean, let's face it, if it's another six months, that's gonna be about a year and a half.
And I couldn't guarantee...
So within the police space, is everything proper?
No.
Or is it just the rest of the building that had? So like, are there exit signs? So in other words, the police station is the inhabited part and the rest is not? So people would not be in...
To, to be honest, I think we just, we're gonna have to look into it because it wasn't really a thing that was even on our radar right now. So we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Uh, you brought up a good point. We weren't looking into that, so, but we will.
Thank you. Well, the engineer, when he came in to talk, he said that there were things that could be done, like the exit sign and there was a couple of other things. I'd have to, I'd have to look at my report.
Yeah, I mean, we can take a look at the report and if there's, certainly if there's easy things to fix.
Yeah. So, you know, we were hoping that they wouldn't be in there this long.
Yeah, and there's vines growing into that downstairs door.
Yeah, we did talk about...
Can't you just clip them?
We were talking about going over there. Unfortunately, they're poison ivy.
Yeah, but there's no leaves on it. Just go over there with...
But you still got the, the oils are still in there, although they're less than what...
We, we did get a price on that cotton mills.
Eleven.
And that was extremely expensive to do. So I know we talked where, I was like, I'll go over there. I've had poison ivy before, I'm not worried too much about it and I'll snip them, let them die.
Yeah, but it's going into the door.
Yeah.
And into the window, just snip it from the, as far as you can...
We, we can do that.
That's all.
Yeah, we can do that. That's not a problem. If I have to do it myself, I'll do it.
If I have to do it myself, I'll do it.
Well, we'll go out there and get them.
All right. Give me permission.
But yeah, we'll get it done.
It's a site visit.
Yeah, site visit's a...
Work, work visit.
So, yeah, we, we can do that. And that was something else we were thinking about doing and we, we do have to do that because if we just cut it, it kills the plan, so... Um, was there anything else?
Oh, me, no, I'm all set.
Okay.
So...
Beth?
I lost it right now.
Okay. Yes, Rich?
Um, we're here. Rich Demetrius, Veterans Council.
Thank you.
Becky Sarah, Veterans Council. Uh, we're here just to address the REIT issue that, for the budget. The board, you guys have been more than supportive and on board this whole thing. And somewhere there's a mistake made. Uh, the night of the, when I called you, David, you got back to me, we were in agreements that should have been in the budget.
The town administrator... We're gonna fix that.
No, no, hold on. No, just hear us out.
Yeah.
Um, the town administrator the other night was on a joint meeting with Purple Becky, he called me. He said that he watched the video, you said you watched the video and Becky only asked for a, a gift account. I went back and watched the video again, and I'm sure you did, I asked you to do it again. David, you even talked about it. We were here for the budget. Becky talked about being a robust increase in our budget. Um, I think we were all in agreement it was gonna go in the budget. The reason she was asking for a separate line item or a gift account was because we wanted that as a separate line so that it wasn't confused with our three thousand dollars we used for the parade and everything else. We wanted to keep it separate. We were gonna raise money to try to offset the whole thing, we just wanted, and that's why we were gonna put it in the budget and offset the whole thing. When I asked the town administrator, you know, what happened, he basically said, you guys are the finance committee's screw up. What, it, what, that's where it happened, somewhere in there.
Okay.
So here's, um, I did read the minutes for the meeting the other night. I think the minutes should be amended because the minutes only talk about Becky asking for a gift account for the Rees Across America, doesn't ask for the, doesn't talk anything about the, asking for the eighty-four hundred dollars or all that stuff. So I think the minutes should be amended to reflect really what happened. If you go back to the tape and, and read it, you'll see what happened.
Okay.
After you guys voted to approve it, it's actually in your budget anyways, you know what I mean? It's not the finance side, it's in your budget. Um, after you guys approved it that night, we went ahead, we made all the arrangements with Rees Across America, we've been in contact, it's gonna happen. It's put the Veterans Council a little bit of a pickle because we, you know, we're gonna raise the money ourselves, we're gonna get it done. We're not gonna ask the town people to pay for it. But we just wanna, you know, we wanna make sure that this doesn't happen again to somebody else. We were trying to just be clear when we said that we were gonna have the gift account and keep it as a separate line item, so was, there was no mistake. We want, anybody looks at it, we wanna see, yeah, this is just REES, the money's coming out, going back to the town, it's not part of our three thousand dollars that we use for the parade, the Purple Hearts dinner and all the other stuff we do with Veterans Council. That's the only reason we asked for a separate lineup and not to merge it together. And I think you guys all knew that when we talked about it. So I don't know what happened to the whole deal, but I think, you know, the minutes should be amended and somebody dropped the ball somewhere. And I don't, you know, it's unfortunate that it happened to the veterans, but, and I'm not trying to blame you guys because you guys have been so, you know, you guys were more than supportive of this whole thing and...
As, as you know, we're always gonna support the veterans and when you brought it up, I was really concerned about it.
Yeah, that night you brought it up, we were like, yeah, it's...
What are you talking about?
Yeah, I get the text, yeah.
I'm like, no, and because I remember you wanted a gift account and we were talking about the eight thousand dollars...
Yep.
To be able to do the, you know, the Rees Across America and, you know, we're going back and forth, so I don't know where the amount got dropped off, but I know we approved the gift account, but I don't, I don't remember if we approved the eight thousand dollars to put into it, which I think was the question. And I'll have to, to be honest, I'll have to watch the video and watch that again.
You said we put it in the budget.
And see it, yeah. See it, yeah.
So it didn't, because FinCom is responsible for the budget, so we should have gone to FinCom to say, make a new line item?
Well, if, if I may, the Memorial Day slash Veteran Programs is on, is held within your budget.
Yep.
So maybe it was...
Oh, no, you would still have to go to FinCom probably.
You would go to FinCom and say, you know, we want...
That's really where it was probably dropped, isn't that step?
Really unfortunate, you know, looking through this omnibus budget, it's pretty, it's a pretty heavy warrant, you know? We got salary increases of eleven thousand, ten thousand seven, over eight thousand on one, another fifty-seven hundred, another ten thousand, five thousand, sixty-eight hundred. And I'm not saying that they're not warranted, but again, it's too bad that our veterans and I, and it was, it was an... I'm sure it wasn't over, so...
We wanna help you and the first thing I said when I talked with Jim is, we need to fix this and, you know, maybe we can work, get, get it somewhere else, we'll get, get the money, we'll get the money for you.
Well, we're gonna take, we're gonna take care of it, we're, we're, we always have Plan B, we're gonna take care of it, we're not begging for the money. But we, and we know you guys are more than supportive of us, we're not blaming you guys, we're not doing any of that. We just, we'd like to make sure this doesn't happen in the future. Uh, we'd like to have the, the notes amended and, um...
Because it doesn't...
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to watch the video.
The minutes don't really reflect what happened, they're just, as we're looking for a gift account, which, and the gift account has not been created as of yet, we don't have a gift account.
But we definitely voted on that.
No, we don't have that either, you know what I mean, so something's going on here.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, and the, the one other thing too is we talked to you about, I talked to you about the office for a while. And, you know, we're trying to restore the honor roll downtown. We're not, I'm not comfortable taking anything to my, or off, into private property and working on it, so we needed an office here. Apparently, we did, we have one. It says in the minutes we were given one and...
We, we did talk about, yes. And what we're trying to do is get that room, because if, if you haven't seen lately, there's dumpsters outside our building. We've been clearing out rooms, getting rid of junk everywhere. There's so much clutter in this building from years of stuff just building up and nobody throwing it away. So we've been getting rid of a ton of stuff, we're getting rid of so much more stuff. And we're, we're trying to reassign people in different offices. We just gave Sylvia Buck and, um, the Historical Society, uh, an office in the back so she can put her stuff in, put all the historical stuff back there and she has a place to work. We've been moving offices around and I know it's not happening quickly for you, but we're making it happen and you guys are getting an office, it's gonna happen. And we've talked about this in the past.
Yeah, I, I thought in the minutes it said that we were given one, that's why we're questioning.
You are, but it's not cleaned out yet.
We're, we're getting things cleaned out. We have to get other departments to move stuff also, but we have to clear out areas so they can move them into the areas, you know, you, you have to wait till somebody moves out before you can move in.
I guess what we're asking is a little, maybe we can kept up to date with you guys, because we, we fall into your purview, basically. Like, we didn't know about the budget, like, that night when we came to eight thousand, she saw it on TV, we didn't, we weren't notified about that, you know, the budgets were due that night and everything. So if we could just be kept abreast of stuff, it would be helpful, because I'd really like to get that honor roll thing done. And it's, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, I mean, it's not gonna be a simple thing, we're gonna take everything apart, we're gonna rebuild the whole, the whole science would be rebuilt.
If we can get your temporary location for a little while.
So, because every name that's gonna be on there has to, we have, we, I wanna take it apart, it's all water damaged in there, we're gonna take the whole thing and we have to have all the names reprinted and put on there. Again, we're doing that, I'm, I'm, actually, I'm all supplying that, that's not the town's money.
This Friday, they're cleaning out the rest of the archive room and the boy scout room, I guess that's what it's called. I've heard it called a million different things. So then parks can move, or decoration can move all their stuff down there and then that room will be available. But I don't know how soon they're gonna be able to create all that.
Okay. They, we're trying to get people moved around that works better for other departments too, um, to give you a space and clear out areas. So everybody has a working space that's good for them here. You know, we've been doing a lot of work on the building, getting a lot of things done. It's just years of stuff just building up and trying to get rid of it now. And we're doing, we had the Sheriff's Department in here, Jim worked with the Sheriff's Department, the Corrections, and they were here and they moved, they filled a dumpster with junk that was in here. While also maintaining that, anything historical value is going to Sylvia Buck to, to be able to kept, um, also. So we're working it, we're working the issue.
We appreciate it.
You know, just please be patient, Rich, we're, we're trying to get it done.
Just keep us posted, we appreciate it, alright, thanks.
Yeah, we already told you, you got an office, we giving you an office. Just gotta clear things out too.
I appreciate it, if you need our help, we'll help.
Thank you.
Can I go back to the, the line item for the gift account? Can we fix that, the special that would be in the fall?
Well, it's kinda dangerous to wait till November, because it's due December. And if it doesn't get voted on, we're screwed, so we, we gotta just, we gotta deal with it on our own.
Yeah, but you still need, eventually you need that budget item for the future. I mean, this year, we're...
This was the first year doing it, that's why we asked to get it in the budget, because we didn't, we know how successful we're gonna be raising, we, we wanna try to cover the whole amount, that's, that was our goal. Our goal was never to ask for money from the town, it was just to give us a, get us a start. In case something ever happened, it would be something to fall back on. It, it's not gonna work wait till November for this, you know what I mean, in case, if the town votes it down and, you know, then we're, we gotta come up with eight grand somewhere, so we're gonna have to get it done before then, so we will, we'll deal with it, we'll deal with it.
Did you wanna address it?
Um, no, I was just, for the, for the line item issue, the gift account was created at, at that meeting on March the fourth. And with you guys, the eight thousand dollars, you, you would have to, or eighty-four hundred dollars, there would have to be some type of article that was written to, to fund a new line item.
Right, but we could do that in a, in a...
Fall, special.
Well, because it's a gift account...
Well, it's not a gift account.
Well...
We don't wanna get, the money was going into the budget.
Right, but you created a gift account, so we...
To receive money.
To receive money, yeah.
To receive the money, so we could essentially, if we have a host...
No, right.
Outside money.
Outside money, right, yeah, yeah.
Donation.
Well, yeah, right.
So with that, if we have a host community agreement, one of the things that we have in our host community agreements is a charitable donation to, within the town. You guys are charitable organization, correct? Because you're nonprofit?
We're not a 501(c).
No.
We're not a 501(c).
Well, maybe we can figure that out.
So moving forward, we can have this discussion again, so again, like Rich said, it doesn't happen again. But I think, you know, we, we pretty much, we got our bases covered. I'll be sending you guys a letter to donate, for sure.
I think it's the least we can do. I don't think I could cover the whole eighty-four hundred dollars.
No, no, not at all, not at all, but, um, everybody, you know, like I said, it's, this is a, a really good program and, and I'm sure we will get a lot of positive feedback, so, um, you know, so...
We'll put it out there and, you know, once we have the information, we'll be able to put it out there and we'll put it on all our stuff to, to get the message out there, so everybody knows.
So to that, um, speaking of, um, veteran programs and so forth, we are moving forward with our, our regular Memorial Day Parade. Last year, we had that monsoon hit, so we had kind of a modified event up at St. Stan's, if you remember. We did not have the actual parade. We've already put a request in that there'd be good weather, so we're planning on a parade.
Well, hopefully that's, gets fulfilled.
Yes.
If we can get good weather, that would be great for the whole town.
So, um, that's the plan moving forward, it's gonna be Sunday, May twenty-ninth. You know, a, as usual, the, it forms at, at twelve-thirty, I'll send you guys an invitation and Derek, maybe you can put that on Facebook and Karen, you can put it on the website, we'll put it on cable. We'd like to, to have you folks join us and participate in the parade. So May twenty-ninth.
What time?
Forms at, at twelve-thirty, um, at the bottom of St. Paul's Cemetery on Maple Street. So we go through the Warren portion, everybody loads up on the buses and we conclude in West Warren at Veterans Park and then followed by the luncheon at the Senior Center. So we'll have our invitations going out to our veterans and their families and, um, should be...
Is everybody like walking on the parade?
Pardon?
Is everybody walking on the parade?
Yep.
Yep.
It's, forms at twelve o'clock, right?
Twelve-thirty, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty.
Any vehicles?
Any what?
Vehicles?
There'll be buses.
And that's at St. Paul's.
Oh, vehicles, well, there's, um, you know, there's, there's the, the fire truck and the ambulance, a Humvee is in there and, but we should have a, a pretty good turnout, um. I, I guess there wasn't enough baseball players from Warren, Westbrookville to make teams of their own, so they combined, so it's Quabot Youth Sports now. So they voted to march in, in this year's parade in Warren, so we should have a pretty good turnout of that.
Does that mean I should talk to my girls and have, wear the uniform and come and join us?
Absolutely, absolutely. And then my, my great niece, uh, she is a, one of the officers in the Oxford ROTC. They are going to be doing, hopefully, the, um, the color guard. They'll be joining us, yeah.
Very good.
They do excellent, excellent for young kids, really good, very proud of them.
ROTC's a good program.
She was my great niece, so. So it should be good, hopefully, you know, like I said, some good weather and we have a good turnout of our veterans and COVID has kinda put a damper on it the last couple of years and then the rain, but, you know, like to see all the, the familiar faces for sure.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
We had talked about just upcoming potential events, we had talked with Park and Rec about partnering with, um, doing a, a concert down at Dean Park and veterans get a free hot dog and a bag of chips or something like that, so on one of the Fridays. That is still, um, in the works, we're hoping to do that. I guess we'll be doing our Purple Heart Breakfast, again, it'll be seven years, we've been doing that, which is good.
You guys are doing a great job, you really are.
It's a lot, it's, it's our, it's an honor to do it, so, yeah.
It's definitely our cause that's worth all, all that we can put into it.
Sure.
And you guys are definitely the tip of the spear on that, making sure things happen and thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
You're doing a great job and all your events, and I've been to a few of them, you do a great job, you do it. And I, my kids love your cupcakes.
That's good, that's good. I'm gonna get you to do dishes this year, KP duty. Yeah, so that's that, so we got some good events coming up and we hope to see everybody join us and, and, you know, really take stock in, in what our veterans have done, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright.
Nobody else? No comments, concerns via Zoom? Any comments and concerns in Zoom land?
Thanks. Going, going, go on, nothing.
Alright. Correspondence? Did we get any? So no correspondence, that's good. So next meeting date is, well, it's actually the Saturday. It is, you know, May fourteenth and that's at eleven-thirty AM for the special town meeting and twelve o'clock for the annual town meeting.
In the auditorium.
In the auditorium of the school. It is not in the, um, gym, it is in the auditorium of the school now, that was a change because the plague got canceled, so we were able to move into the auditorium now. It's a lot more comfortable for everybody. So that's, sorry, the plague got canceled, but it helped us out.
Yeah, just moved one week.
Alright, um, so that's our next meeting, and then the meeting after that for our selectmen's meeting is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six PM.
That's the one, we won't be at.
And you won't be at that one?
With our two public areas.
Yeah, so. Alright, so...